I called the April 11th, 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to Order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to that. As to that, we will give you the invocation. I call upon the 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM.
I called the April 11th, 2023 Work Session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the service of the many good people in our community. We ask that you help us that as we discuss the needs of our community tonight, that we can have our minds enlightened as to thy will and as to the greatest number of citizens that we can benefit through our actions. We're grateful for the good service given by the people that are here tonight and ask that you please bless them in their efforts, that they will have the strength and the stamina that they need to continue. Please bless our servicemen and our police officers and our other first responders, that they will have safety as they continue to serve the community and that we can assist them in whatever ways we can. We ask for these blessings in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Would the city administrator please conduct the roll call?
I'll do it, Your Honor.
That sounds good, Ms. What's?
Councilwoman Lindsey Cox.
Here.
Pressman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilwoman Dean Peranto.
Here.
Councilwoman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Mayor Tim Hancock.
I am here. The Chair would entertain a motion to excuse Carla Borders and Kristi Salisbury from tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Larson, second by Councilman Peranto. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. I vote aye. Motion passes. I declare we do have a quorum present tonight. The Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Cox with the motion, Councilman Bailey with the second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. All opposed say nay. Motion passes. Community contracts for services proposals. Finance directors, report please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Each year, the city of Riverton receives direct distribution funding from the state of Wyoming each year. Historically, the monies are allocated towards one-time purchases and capital construction, capital construction projects and purchases, and a portion of this is also divided up to provide it to local programs and organizations that benefit the community citizens. These organizations are not under the direct oversight of the city of Riverton and they are not maintained by city departments. Last year, the city council approved funding requests totaling $270,500 to 11 different entities. Beginning in February, February 16th of this year, the staff began noticing the public about the application process through the city website, social media site, and local media channels. The city staff also provided email notifications to its current recipients and also allowed opportunity for any other interested organizations to request approval of money before the adoption of the 23-24 budget. The staff received $603,661 in funding requests from 17 organizations. Very exciting seeing everybody in the crowd tonight and we do know and understand your need for funding. This particular meeting is not designed for you to make decisions on the funding tonight, but rather for the organizations to be able to present themselves and their requests and then it will also provide guidance to us as we move further through the budget process. And with that, I would stand for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. And so I guess the folks here are aware, generally speaking, the supplemental funding is something that started when the legislature changed the way that the sales tax was funded in the state of Wyoming. So it used to be that groceries would be taxed the same as everything else in terms of sales and when they took that amount of funding away in order to make up for it, the legislature started providing additional funding to the municipalities and so this money is something that is kind of at the whim of the legislature and the way that the city of Riverton historically has decided to disperse it is basically to organizations that provide services that the city basically wishes we could, but we can't. We can't do everything. So that tends to have been what we've used as, I guess, guidance in the past when we've decided programs to fund. What I would suggest we do tonight is that we just go in alphabetical order. I'm sorry, Wind River Heritage Center puts you last. But unless there's another organization that maybe has some other appointments tonight or something like that, if you'd request to go earlier, we can consider that, but that'd just be my thought tonight. So anybody that has a burning desire to go first or has something else going on, their emergency or whatever? If not, then we can just start with Central Wyoming Cats. Who's here for Cats? Oh, yes. And if you can just, when you come up, tell us your name, the organization you represent, and then give us whatever you'd like to present tonight and then if we have any questions afterwards, we'll ask them. But we'll try to keep things pretty fast because we do have a lot of organizations, which is great.
Mr. Mayor, councilmen and women, pardon me. My name is Barb Gates. I'm the treasurer for the Central Wyoming Children's Center for Art Technology and Science. We are getting ready to celebrate our ninth anniversary. We've been in business nine years. So generally, if an organization can make it five years, our success rate will be, you know, pretty good. So we are here requesting $10,000. Our budget is $53,900. We serve between 2,000 and 2,500 people in the community, this being kids. And when kids come, this is not a babysitting service, but when children come, they come with their parents. So this is a time for parents to play with their kids, teach their kids. We always know we're successful, and this sounds odd, but we know we're successful when kiddos walk out the door crying. So when I'm working, I always stop them and say, "Let me give you a little stamp of Cats and please come back." So we know we're successful when kids don't want to leave. So thank you very much for the funding you've given us in the past and we appreciate your consideration of this request. Thank you all.
Thank you very much, Ms. Yates. Are there any questions if you want to stick around just a minute? There might not be any questions and I might have just made you come up for a reason.
That's okay.
Do we have any questions regarding Cats? Okay. Well, like I said, I'm sorry to make you come.
That's okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, I guess it's in the application. Never mind, I already saw it. All right. Next up is Child Development Services of Fremont County. Oh, you look familiar. I feel like we just saw you last week.
I just saw you guys. I'm back. Thank you, Your Honor and Council. And first, I just want to say thank you to Mayor and Lindsey for both attending this week in the Purple Parade. We appreciate your support in being out there and part of that event, which was one of our fundraising events. So I'll go ahead and pull this up. And I'm just going to share a little bit about, my name's Courtney Helm, the Executive Director for Child Development Services of Fremont County. And today I am here to just, on behalf of CDS, to ask for help and assistance in funding two new positions in our organization. If you don't know about CDS, and just a reminder for those of you who do, because I was just here and shared this with you guys last week. We are nonprofit, been here for 44 years. We serve an average of 226 families every year and that's not individual kids, but that is families with a staff of 61 across the county. We, in our organization, we have occupational therapists, physical therapists, speech-language pathologists, teachers, educational assistants, bus drivers, finance, business office. We are a full school district on our own here and a nonprofit at that. We do serve families zero to five years old and one of the big things that we are known for is early intervention and education. We focus on children with disabilities and provide services for their families. In doing this, part of it is preschool services and in Riverton, we know that only one-third of our children entering kindergarten every year here in Riverton have any education prior to coming to Kinder. Some of that is by choice, but a lot of it is because there is no space available for early childhood education. There's just not the opportunity. Either they can't afford it, they don't qualify for our Head Start programs, they don't have a developmental disability at all, or they are choosing. Of course, we do have some that choose to stay home or choose to go to our private. So the big part of what we do is provide a preschool setting. There's pay setters typically developing kids as well as our exceptional learners, those with a developmental disability. We also provide payments to the local preschools to serve those kids within their private preschools and that was something that happened new. In 2020, we received a 22% decrease in our budget overall, but we had an increase in our expectations and the fact that we needed to pay our outreach preschools for our children to attend there while they were getting services. So while our funding from the state and federal government, which is a per capita per, for our children with disabilities decreased that 22%, they also asked that we pay for them to go to outside preschools and have pay setters within their classrooms. So the need and the responsibility increased while the funding we got decreased. So you'll see today, I have a large ask for you. We are looking for $100,000. In total, I am reaching out to multiple different foundations and organizations to help fund additional pieces of this program. But specifically for Riverton, we are looking to add a birth-to-three, an infant program. So that's what I'm asking for help with today. We are finding that our families cannot go back to work because they don't have childcare. We have DFS reaching out to us. We have families reaching out to us here in Riverton and we currently do not have a infant and toddler program. And so we're wanting to add this. If you just take a look at this, this is what we're wanting to add. We were able to add it in Lander this past year, but we couldn't afford to add it here in Riverton. So we're asking for that money to cover a teacher and an educational assistant to serve children here. It adds two more jobs to our, our community, but it also is going to be able to serve at a minimum of six families. So I know that's not a very big piece of it. We are looking at, this is a benefited position, so it does have a lot of costs that comes with it. We are doing multiple fundraisers, so y'all, I already thanked you for that. Sorry for my y'all from Texas. But throughout the year, we are continuing to fundraise. So any part of this that the city is able to help us with in funding this position and adding to our community another infant and toddler classroom, another place so that people can go back to work and these additional jobs, we would appreciate it.
Thank you. Any questions? I have a question. How was the birth-to-three you had added in Lander last year? How was that funded?
ARPA funds.
ARPA funds? Okay. And then you said at least six families. How many, like, what's your maximum class size if you did have a teacher and an educational assistant here?
We can do eight to one on a daily basis and so with infants and toddlers, sometimes they only come Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday classes, so we can double and triple that. It is a full day option, so that allows for us also to have the flexibility to do half-day programming if they only want two or three hours for an infant or a toddler. Depending on their work and the work schedule of the family, we have that flexibility. So maximum, if we did four, if we did half-days, we could be serving, I'm not really good at math, so 32 kids, so 32.
And how many, how many kids are being served with the position in Lander right now?
In Lander, right now, we have 12 kids being served.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Ms. Hill. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you again.
All right. Eagles Hope Transition Center.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor. My name is Michelle Woodmeyer. I am the Director of Eagles Hope Transitions and Emergency Shelter. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. It's always a privilege to be here. I'm a little nervous, so then I trip over my words, so I apologize, but thank you again. So Eagles Hope, just a brief rundown. We are grassroots and there was a group that started Eagles Hope back in 2013 when a young homeless man decided to make a change for his life and go to treatment. And he went to treatment. He got all the skills he needed and he graduated successfully. But when he got out of treatment, he didn't have anywhere to go. So he transitioned back into the world that he knew, which was the homeless, and he passed away. So from there, Eagles Hope, we are named after Dana Eagle. But since that time, we have transitioned a lot ourselves, so we are transitional right now. We also have a couple beds that are for emergency services as well. So originally, Eagles Hope responded to the death of the young man that didn't have anywhere to go. But since then, we have, our residents are expected to get jobs, participate in support sobriety, parenting classes, and learn to be productive citizens. So here beside me are my residents and they are the people. I have submitted statistics of how many men and women we serve, how many American Indian and white we serve, but these individuals are more than numbers. These are people and this is who I serve. In 2022, under emergency shelter, I have served 103 individuals with 17,235 services. Services include meals, support sobriety, clothing, hygiene, bedding, washing, case management, housing unit, and referrals, amongst others. In our transitional housing, we have served 121 families and we've provided 17,905 services. I'm going to read a couple of stories and supports for us. I have Devon Anderson and Shannon McCourly and they went through Eagles Hope for two years and now they are my staff because they've been through it, they understand what it is, and they can help others coming in. So Devon Anderson is 38. He grew up in a very happy household, mostly. His dad and stepmother raised him. His parents were very conservative. His father was a very high-functioning alcoholic. He worked very hard, seven days a week, and has children wanted for nothing other than his health. Years later, alcoholism did not have a negative effect on his life, or so he thought. He really admired his father. At around age 16, he started experimenting with alcohol and marijuana. By the time he was 18, he was mostly using alcohol and then meth. Alcohol from his point on will be in heavy use daily. In 2009, he moved back to his hometown of Lander where meth is a very big part of a lot of lives. He started using intravenously and mostly stuck to that. He had a lot of hospitalizations. He had misdemeanors, gel time, and a brand-new baby girl. He thought he was doing well and can continue on this way. To put it short, his combined alcohol and meth use made it very hard and unpredictable and he became a very paranoid person. In 2018, the inevitable happened. He and Shannon were visited by DFS and served a search warrant. They were arrested for possession of meth and felony child endangerment and they lost the custody of their child. These charges resulted in three years of probation and inpatient treatment. He was trying, but until he was actually in treatment, he was not successful. After treatment, there was not much, much options out there for him. Lander would not have put me back on the same path. He feels very fortunate that there was a place that he could transition to, such as Eagles Hope. He came to Eagles Hope from Center of Hope. The next two years leaving that Eagles Hope were just as important as treatment was. And now that I think about it, getting arrested in the first place, DFS was tremendously supportive as well. supportive as well. Eagles Hope provided him the time, which was the two years in the program, and support needed to get back and to live a healthy lifestyle and be productive members of society, which is our ultimate goal. I have another letter from Jeff. And I'm just going to summarize his. Jeff came to us by Riverton PD last summer. He had no place to go. He was living on the streets, and he started as emergency shelter, and then he transitioned into transitional housing. What I want to make clear about Jeff's story is Jeff needs safe and sober living. Because without this structure and without the support of that, he would not be clean and sober today. And then I'm going to have one more speak for himself. Lenny?
Your Honor and Council members, I'm not real good with getting up here and speaking in front of a bunch of folks, but I'd just like to say real quick, Eagles Hope has been a godsend for me. I know I would, at the very least, be homeless probably, or jail or prison if not dead or due to drugs or alcohol. And this place has given me some much-needed structure. They do regular breathalyzers and UAs and work, they have a strict curfew, and they very mindful of the company we keep. And they also work close with the Wyoming Department of Corrections parole and probation, so keep a close eye on us. But it's a much-needed structure, and it's just been a godsend, these folks here. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Lenny, how long have you been with Eagles Hope?
I've been there three months, sir.
Good.
So far, so good, so.
All right.
Thank you. So, Your Honor, Counsel, I am asking for $49,661.42. This covers our utilities and our property insurance. We also partner with School District 25, Fremont County Alliance Against Sexual and Domestic Assault and Fremont Counseling. We have rooms available for them anytime they have a placement that they need to house somebody. We also work closely with the Department of Corrections and the CAST Fremont County.
Court assisted.
Court-assisted treatment programs. And our funding is unknown coming up in October 1st because the Community Service Block grant is changing how they administer funds. So with that unknown, we are, we're just looking to find other funding sources and being able to provide the services that we have been providing in the past. Because again, these aren't just numbers, these are real people. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Family and Community Support Team.
Good evening. My name is Jay Sbradlin. I'm with Fremont County School District 25, and Danielle Coogler also. I'd like to give you guys a brief overview of what we do and what we were hired to do, and some of the initiatives we've taken. We were hired initially last year, Danielle and myself, as attendance liaisons. And I'll go into attendance here in just a minute. Because due to COVID, the district found the need, you know, people were just staying home, and we needed to find reasons that students weren't coming to school. Since then, we have become more of the heart of the community because through attendance, we have found there's reasons that these children are not coming to school. And we inherently just started helping them, started helping them overcome these barriers. With that, we also have Circles Fremont County within our school district. Teri Hayes runs that, and she's not able to be with us tonight because she's actually teaching a poverty alleviation class currently, and that's going on. So just a brief overview of what Circles is, it's a poverty management system. She, it's probably an 18, to do it properly, it takes about 18 months to put somebody through this course. She has a course running now, and there's another course planned on starting in September. What you start with is crisis intervention. And through training and development and working with families, our overall goal is to get them advanced and placed in, into a place where they have prosperity. Crisis intervention is the beginning. We find people that are homeless, people that are in need, people that have barriers that you wouldn't even comprehend or think of, and then you try to help them overcome it. Little things like, I would like to have a job, but I don't have a driver's license to get to my job, and I don't have money for that driver's license. We're like, okay, we can help. There's no one else that's helping with that right now. We can be that person. As you've seen here, the work pathways, all the soft sets of skills, non-negotiables that we teach them, line of sight and cliff effect mitigation plans are all things that Teri teaches in these weekly meetings to families. The weekly meetings she has are so important, and they're actually really cool, because we've partnered with the Boys and Girls Club. We have babysitters there for when the families come in. There's somebody to take care of the kids. It's just, it's turning into a really, really cool thing. We help them get over all of their cliff effect barriers. If they have felonies, we teach them how to get a job with a felony, because as some of us know in here, you know, that's a, that's a big thing. It creates even more barriers for you. So that's what we're here to help, mainly Teri. That's her job within this family resource. Danielle and I are family resource advisors. Like I said, we started last year as just attendance liaisons, and it has morphed into family resource advisors because we were finding all of these things that we could help with in the community. And we focus on being the heart of the community, and that's what the school district wants. The school district sees all of the littles, and they create all of the adults. So we believe that creating a strong heart of that community is vital, and we would like to take on that role and make it ours. Things that we do as family resource advisors, we work with students, families. We work with the community through district partnerships, like our beautiful partnership with Michelle at Eagles Hope. And we work on team building and social events for our district because we, you know, obviously believe that having a happy staff makes happier kids, and then happier kids are more successful kids. So, like I said, attendance was our main focus. We dealt mainly with tier-three attendance, and as you can see up there, that's students missing 20% or more of school. That's one day a week. It's mind-blowing how many students that is right now. I would, a rough guess would be 45% of our school is missing 20% or more of school. So when we talk about graduation rates and job placement and things like that, we're really trying to tackle that in kindergarten now, so that in 12 and 13 years, we have quality citizens entering the workforce. Current tier-two interventions, like I said, 20% or more. We have 104 referrals this year. That's not all of them. We have probably nearer 300 to 400 students missing 24, 20 or more percent of school, but a lot of them are siblings. So that really shows family numbers. We also had to start a new thing this year. There's a new state law for willfully absent and habitually truant. Any student that misses five days of unexcused school is reported to the school board, the county attorney, and if needed, tribal. That's taken up most of our job this year, sending out all these letters to parents. As you can see there, we've sent 289 individual letters home to families for students who have missed five or more days. Oh, look how pretty. Another thing that we cover, and it's actually Danielle's job, is McKinney-Vento. McKinney-Vento is our, is the homeless act. We have currently 61 students identified in our school district as homeless, and we believe that number is far lower than the actual number. We are having trouble identifying these students because the definition of homelessness is so wide and encompassing that a lot of students and families don't believe that they're homeless. They believe that living on a couch of your grandmother with, with all 13 of your other cousins is normal, which it is not. And they, they rate McKinney-Vento. McKinney-Vento really only guarantees and provides that those students will have transportation to school. They will have a free lunch and breakfast when they get there, and that's about it. The McKinney-Vento grant is very limited also for what we can use it for. To make it very simple, all we can really use that grant for is to educate ourselves on homelessness. We cannot use that money to spend on transportation, driver's licenses, things that Circles needs to do, or food, which is a very big need for our families in transition. Here's some of the Wyoming homeless data, and I would like for you to know that our school district is unfortunately leading a lot of these homeless numbers.
State of Wyoming, to be exact. We currently have the highest number, even at our number of 61, which is extremely low. Our post-COVID numbers statistically report that one in four students in Fremont County is currently homeless by definition. This is where a lot of our ask for our funding came from because of what we are unable to provide. We will have a family that finally gets that first and last month's rent. They're on the list for an apartment, and, well, you have to pay your $150 application fee and a background check, the simple things that not everybody thinks about, and that could set them back an entire another month. It's the little things like that that we are really trying to help with our families, because they're not going to come to school when they're worried about where they'll sleep that night as well.
So why are we asking for money? Our positions and everything we do is ESAR-funded. So we're, our money that's even paying for our jobs at this point, we're unclear about what we're doing next year, and we hope that we're here. They're just going to have to find somewhere else to put where our salaries come from, because ESAR is going away. We can't use ESAR funding for these things that we want to do because they're not related to COVID.
Directly related.
Directly related to COVID. So what we're asking for is $10,000 for us to have money, for us to really create rapid response for our families and help our children come to school. This money can be used for things that our McKinney-Vento grant cannot, such as food for these families, clothes, bedrolls, licensure, or all the things we talked about, even for Circles. And that's all I have. If you all have any questions.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I did have a question. Let me look at my notes so I can remember what it was. So you were saying you're focusing a lot on attendance. Is that, I got the impression that that was more so trying to find out why people aren't going to, aren't coming to school. But then it sounds like you're also moving in towards just sending letters out? Where is your focus with that?
Both.
Okay.
Okay. So attendance was our look behind the curtain to find these problems that we started attacking.
That's where we located the barriers that now we're trying to address.
Through chronic attendance. This year, we have also been added by the state that habitually truant, willfully absent. And both of those things, habitually truant is a child that the school and a parent has made all efforts to make them go to school, and they won't. So they're either skipping or staying home, or their parent has an unruly child. And willfully absent is the parent is not making all effort to get their child to school. That's just an identification that we have to make per the state starting this year, and we have to send those letters out.
So that's partly where you're.
Down the barriers.
Gotcha.
And why, you know, some of our families that don't have bus stops right in front of their house, while they can't get them to three miles to the bus stop until payday in two weeks because they can't get a tire fixed, or whenever, when we were doing our attendance, that's when we realized it's not always them not wanting to send their kids to school, it's the legitimate barriers behind it.
Thank you. Is there any other questions? Okay. Well, thank you. I appreciate it. Rolling right along. Is anybody here for injury prevention resources? I had gotten an email indicating he wasn't going to be able to be here tonight. He had a family emergency as of today. I get, yes. Okay. Well, we'll figure out how we'll deal with that. Juvenile Justice Services of Fremont County, AKA Youth Services.
Good evening.
Thank you. And could you tell us your names?
Yep. My name's Hattie Calvert, and I am the Assistant Director of Juvenile Services of Fremont County, better known as Youth Services.
And my name is Casey Murray. I'm the Executive Director for Youth Services.
Go ahead.
Okay, perfect. So you guys have the presentation, you have the graph that we provide. Okay. So basically, Youth Services, what we do is every citation that is issued to, a misdemeanor citation, issued to a juvenile in Fremont County gets a juvenile service notification to come into our office on a given date at 9:00 a.m. And what we do is we do a pretty basic intake on them, ask them school, home, those kinds of things, potential placements, all the, the, the basic information we need from them. We make recommendations to the county attorney's office following that intake in regards to how to best handle the citation. Youth Services, we do pre-court diversion contracts, as well as if the case is filed in the circuit court, we do what we call a delayed sentencing bond. And then we provide supervision on those probation terms. We also have a day reporting center, which is, provides educational services, and we do cultural services, financial literacy classes, Thinking for a Change. We just provide a criminal justice approach, I guess, involved in the schooling. And those kids come from any school district in Fremont County. Right now, we have only School District 25 kids, and they work on their academics in the mornings and in the afternoons. We kind of do a variety of activities with them to try and get them to be functioning members of society. We do GPS monitoring systems, all those kinds of things on, within our supervision. And so we're just requesting funding to help us with all of that good stuff. One statistic that, you know, that we did want to bring up, which is kind of alarming when I was pulling this, is this time last year, our Riverton office had handled 126 citations. And during that same time, from July 1 to March 28 of this year, we have handled 236. So we have had a very significant increase. Our biggest increase in alcohol and drug citations. We, we're busy. We're handling a lot of kids. We got a lot going on, and so.
The other thing I'd like to add just about the supervision piece, as we're getting these juveniles that have significant alcohol and drug issues, they require a lot more intensive supervision. So we have to be monitoring them more, meeting with them more. And so this funding also goes to help offset the cost. As you can see, it's not a very large portion of the budget that we presented of what we spend. And our hope is, is that we can continue to serve as many juveniles as possible because the numbers are only increasing, and we're tending to see some pretty significant risky behavior. And we're going to end up having juveniles, we've had juveniles die, and we want to prevent that. So we want to provide appropriate supervision.
Thank you. Any questions? Go ahead, Mr. Bailey.
How much were you asking for?
We asked for $35,000.
Is it going to make a big difference? I guess I, I'm privy to the fact that the judge is wanting to have those initial hearings in Riverton rather than Lander. They were all having to go to Lander.
Correct. That, it won't make a difference. It's going to actually be beneficial for our Riverton families. Part, and a large part of that is, we have, you know, if a family no-shows for whatever reason, they potentially could end up with a warrant. Then we got kids running around with active failure to appear warrant. So I think that moving the initial appearances to Riverton will help alleviate some of that unnecessary FTA warrants on kids, which, you know, alleviates taking them over to Lander and all of that kind of stuff.
Helps deal with the barrier, I guess.
Yes, it does.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right. Does anybody want to mix it up and go next? I'm not trying to be mean to Riverton Raiders. I'm, you can come up next. Who's here for the Raiders? Oh, holding double duty tonight.
Again, my name's Jay Sbradlin. I'm a board member for the Riverton Raiders. The Riverton Raiders is our American Legion baseball team here. We host teams from all across the state here to Roy Pack Field. What we are asking for money this year for is to improve our field, just to give it, make it a better experience for all of the people who come to visit. We have already secured a grant to improve on our field and our stands. What we're asking for now is for our concession stand. It is extremely dated, and it's getting dilapidated. We would like to fix the counters and things like that. We would like to fix the counters and things like that. We are graciously asking for $10,000. Of that, that will allow us $1,500 to fix our cabinets and our sink, and make it where we can pass a food inspection in there. And we're also asking for, the rest of the money is for our two major appliances. We would like a refrigerator to store our food. And we would also like a commercial-grade ice machine. It's hot summer days at the ballpark. Not only would that save us money on away games when we fill our coolers and drinks for our athletes, it would be ice for our visitors coming in, and also for injuries. We don't have our own first aid ice even there, so.
All right, thank you, Jace. I guess just to clarify, I have the application here, it said 7,500, I think, unless mine's different.
That's what I said in my mind, I'm not sure what my mouth said. Thank you.
I've done that before.
1,500 and 5,000 broken down with the cabinets, sink, and then the two appliances.
So not 10,000?
Okay.
I mean, if you want.
I just wanted to make sure.
Hey, thank you, thank you.
There was a last...
I think I was on my last presentation.
They're going to send you more often.
Was the last presentation before this, the amount there was correct too, right? Okay.
I'm glad you still have the application.
Okay, well, thank you, any questions? All right.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you, are you coming back up for another one, or is that it for you today? It sounded like you knew about Mr. Cooper, so I almost expected you to stand up for that too. No? Okay. All right, Pause for Life.
Good evening, Your Honor and Councilmembers. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with you tonight and consider our funding application. My name is Pamela Canham, I am the Board Chairman for Pause for Life.
I'm Brittany Martin, I am the Shelter Manager.
We are asking this year for an increase over what we normally ask for. We're asking for 75,000. The reason being, we have run the shelter for 19 years, and our outdoor kennels are falling apart and need to be replaced. Our indoor kennels, all the doors need to be, all the gates need to be replaced in there. So just for materials alone, we're looking at probably, what, 35, 36,000?
We're at 6,000. The outside kennels, just in general, will be about $4,000. And then the inside, just to do the gates, would be about $2,000.
Okay, that's for all the kennels?
Just the materials.
Materials, okay. Well, I apologize, I had a larger number in mind. But it is a one-time, well, not necessarily a one-time expense, but certainly not a yearly expense. And we also obviously have to have the people to do it. We have to pay for that. In addition, and Brittany is the expert on this, we have had twice as many animals come through our shelter this year as we did last year. We currently have...
We're at 41 dogs and 25 cats at the moment. And our facility spaciously holds 25 dogs. We are currently either putting two or three dogs in a kennel that get along together, or we are using the small to medium-sized wire crates that you can buy at Walmart to house these animals.
So needless to say, it, it's quite a bit for our staff. We are short-staffed. We would like to add another kennel staff because, as you can imagine, with 41 dogs and 20-some-odd cats, that's a lot of work for these people. They are not in it for the money. These are people that are making 8 to 8.50 an hour. They do it for the love of the animals. As most of you know, we are a no-kill shelter. We have been fortunate in that we partner with a number of organizations. The Adoption Center in Jackson, Rock Springs, Rollins, Laramie, Cheyenne. And, you know, that has saved our bacon on more than one occasion because they will do transports for us, and they will take animals for us. Brittany? The other thing too, in addition, you know, we, obviously, we get the funding from the city. We fundraise pretty much every month of the year. We have seven fundraisers that are consistent every year. And others that sort of pop up here and there that we do. But most of our money comes from fundraising. We have some very generous donors in the community who also help out whenever we holler and go, "Help!" And, and we're very grateful for the generosity of this community. We're very grateful to the District 25 Rec Board for the grant that they gave us, thank you, Lindsay. We are now able to put some really nice benches in our new play area just north of the, of the shelter, and provide some interactive toys for the dogs. And if kids, you know, want to go in and play with the dogs, it enables them to do that. We have a Read to the Critter program that all of the elementary schools in town, the Boys and Girls Club, private schools, all take advantage of. And we were, thanks to the Rec Board, were able to buy some really nice cushy pillows for the kids to sit on. They sit in front of the kennels and they read to the dogs, or they read to the cats. And it's not only wonderful for the animals, but there are a lot of kids out there that are very hesitant to read in front of their peers. Maybe they have a stutter, maybe they just are unsure of themselves, or not quite, you know, comfortable with the vocabulary. Dogs and cats are totally non-judgmental, they don't care if the kids make a mistake. They're just happy to have somebody sitting there talking to them. So this is, this is, you know, another program that we do that helps the community other than the obvious one, which is keeping stray animals off the streets and keeping our citizens safe. Did you want to add anything else, Brittany?
I would say it's been a couple of years since I've had a cat, but I think cats by nature are judgmental, so I... Would have to disagree.
Well, you probably have a point there.
Maybe not of my reading skills, but about everything else. Any questions?
Dogs are a little more forgiving.
Yeah, dogs tend to be, they're okay with it.
Yeah, and we will be, you know, looking for grants. I've had the wonderful opportunity to introduce myself to Chief Hurtado before the meeting, and he has some information on grants for no-kill shelters, so he and I are going to be getting together.
Right.
So, I mean, we are always looking for other sources of funding, but this year in particular, it's just been a very tough year for us as far as overcrowding. And in addition to the kennels, we also need a new water heater. The water heater that we currently have in the shelter is not large enough for the capacity that we need. We need a, a new dog bathing station. You know, there are just upkeep things after 19 years that have got to be addressed, that are not normally in our, in our budget.
Gotcha. All right, well, thank you, anything else, questions? Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
All right, now we get into a lot of Rs. That's what we get for living in a town that starts with the letter R. So next up is our rec.
See how we switched that up and took off the word Riverton so we could go first?
Yeah, I see that, that, that makes sense now. And I could see, thinking ahead, however many years it's been, that that was the plan.
Well, we appreciate you guys so much and your continued support. So we'll go through this pretty quick because you guys have a long night ahead of you. And I know you have this presentation, I'm Mary Axel, I'm the Director of our Recreation.
And I'm Addie Appelin, Coordinator, Rec Coordinator, forgot.
She's all things cool. So you guys know, you're familiar with our mission, it's to strengthen our community, and that's the bottom line for us. We want to enrich the lives of every citizen, and we're always working hard to do that and find new ways to reinvent our program. One thing I thought was really interesting is, we tend to define ourselves by what we don't have, not what we have. And we've strived to change that perception, you know, we all know, we're all aware that we don't have a rec center, but what we have is something very special with our partnerships in this community and what we're able to do. So we like to define ourselves by what we can do. In the past year, I can't, I printed these and they're so dark, I have to look on the computer, we've served a little over, under 5,000 community members with over 200 classes. Now that, keep in mind, that does not include the Summer Academy. We keep that separate because we do fund a portion of that from a gracious District 25 Rec Board grant. So in addition to those statistics, we have 73 other classes that we offer in a three-week period in June. That's a program that's completely free to our community members. And last year, we had 788 enrollments, and we were limited in space. So this year, we're super stoked because we're going to, we won't double it, but it'll be close. CWC has reported to us that our website link on their website is their most frequented spot, which we're super proud of that, when you're under a community college, that's a really cool claim to fame. Recreation, we all know, is a huge part of the quality of life. I would say in the top five, when you list all the things in a community that you want, recreation would come up there as a top five. I just, this is just quick, and I'm not going to belabor this, but in 2006 was when the city took on the funding as a line item in your budget for 300,000 dollars. And for whatever reasons, that didn't work out. And so in 2008 was when our rec was originated and funded at 145,000 at that time. Through the years, we've had several decreases, and this year, we're asking for the same amount, even though we all know that everything costs so much more. But we're still, we're comfortable with the amount that you refunded us last year. And I want you guys to know that we get a ton of thanks. People are very appreciative of our programs, but we turn that back to you guys because without your funding, we couldn't do this. And I think we're one of the few requesters tonight that doesn't have another governing body. You are our sole funder, other than the District 25 Rec Board that is designated for Summer Academy. And it's been our privilege to serve this community, we just enjoy what we do. And I know that the members in our community recognize who's behind the funding. They know that it's the City of Riverton, we put our, your logo on everything we do. As I mentioned, we don't have a rec center, so we need our partners, and they're the keys to our success. And we partner with everybody and anybody that wants to partner with us. We have never turned anyone away, and I love all the entities here, you guys, we'll partner with you. Through, through what we've been doing, we feel like we're creating these ripples in our community that go out through the children, through the adults, through the parents, that extend beyond what we can even imagine. And I think you guys need to know that too, for your roles that you guys play in this, beyond what we can even imagine. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Addie because I try not to be a talkative person.
So we asked a bunch of people, just throughout our classes and everything, what they have to say about our recreation. And there's a ton here in the next few slides, so I'm not going to make you read all of them. If you do at a later date, that would be awesome, because there's a lot of awesome things. But just some things that stuck out to us was, there's something for everyone. We are very proud of the variety that we offer. Another big one that we like is the very bottom quote that says, "I have never been disappointed or wished I hadn't signed up for something." That's huge, I mean, a lot of our classes, they're not necessarily expensive, but you know, that, the person that participated in that class was one of our hit classes, which is $80. And so for her to participate in that and love every second of it is important to us. And then just again, it's such an important part of our community, we see that over and over again throughout these vital part of our community, again, essential part to the quality of life, like Mary hit on earlier. Let's see. A big one that I want to note is in that huge testimonial in the middle. It says, "It is easy to see what a positive impact our recreation has on our community. The activities are both enjoyable and affordable," and we're also very proud of that. Given the amount of people that mentioned the variety and the affordability, we're pretty proud because there is just two of us, and so to be able to offer all of these activities and at an affordable rate where people can, anybody in any economic status can afford to attend these is important to us. And then just some more, again, there's just so many that people wrote in to us, but...
So one thing I want to point out to you guys is, we just keep moving forward. We keep entering areas that we haven't been in before, and every year, you're funding a new program, something different. And that's what, something that really excites us, we evaluate everything we've done, everything we're trying to offer to make sure that we do have a variety, and if it, that we can build on what is already here. As we go forward, we're looking forward to more classes in City Park. We did, started the movie, movies in the park last year, we're going to do more of those, weather permitting. We're, we're going to do our rec pop-up, where we just pop up to certain, at certain events with activities for kids and families to participate in. We're not sure on how that's going to look, but I think it sounds really cool. And then playdates at the splash pad, a community scavenger hunt, we're just trying to come up with some more creative ideas. And of course, we always want to know, as you, as our sole funder, what your guys' goals are. And I know Mike and I have had some conversations about bigger goals and bigger ambitions of what we want this program to look like, so I always appreciate that feedback. Are there any questions?
All right, well, thank you, Mary and Addie.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, Riverton Adult Softball Association, soft, soft, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, for hearing me out. My name is Robert Franks, I'm the President of the Riverton Adult Softball Association. We just came to fruition this year, actually, because things weren't running right with the past person that we had running our leagues, and we would like to actually get, and with the Riverton Girls Fast Pitch League, to get our fields improved down there. We're only sitting on two fields at the moment that are playable, and I believe we have around 400-plus people that use those fields. We're asking for $15,000 for field upgrades as to fix sprinkler systems and to get sod and hydro seeding done on the southeast field this year. We're also looking to buy new bases, new base sets for the two northeast and southeast fields. And we actually have a five-year plan here, or what we're trying to, or master plan of what we're trying to do here. There's a...
Thank you.
Yeah, we're trying to work with the Girls Fast Pitch, and we actually got our league set up as a nonprofit and everything like that so we can request grants. We're also looking for funding through the Fremont County Rec Board, the school district, because we're trying to get those fields playable, and the Girls Fast Pitch are trying to get sanctioned for high school. So we're trying to get all that done, and all of our things we're trying to get done, at least for this year, is just to get the dirt work done on the northeast and southeast fields, get the sprinkler systems fixed on them, and try to get hydro seeding done on the southeast field, along with doing some light repairs and bulb replacements on the northwest and south. Along with doing some light repairs and bulb replacements on the northwest and southwest fields, the ones that are actually playable still. Our goals in spending for the northwest and southwest fields this year, we're looking at about $5,600 is what we're trying to get for 400 per team. And we're looking to take in 14 teams for the adult league. That's basically going to run our league operations. And if we have extra money, we can put towards more things with the fields. But we're asking for the $15,000 to get the sprinklers upgraded and fixed and to get, hopefully to where we can at least play on the, at least one of the fields next year and have three fields down there. And the future goals too, is the fact that we can have host tournaments and things like that down there and bring people to the community and bring in more money to the community to actually have a legit softball complex to play on and not just the two fields that we have right now.
Well, thank you, Mr. Franks. Have you been doing any other fundraising for this? I saw that you had a, it looks like, if I'm not mistaken, is that District 25, you requested 17,000 and then Fremont County requested 7,000?
Yes. We, I believe the Girls Fast Pitch requested the money from the School District Board, like I said, because they're trying to get sanctioned to where they can play high school softball. And I think...
Was that granted?
It was.
It was? Okay.
It was actually more than that. We covered the cost. The rec board covered, it looks like the initial ask was 38,000. And we're just over 20,000 in grants.
That's good. It's good to hear. Have you done any other fundraising? I know this is new. I mean, I get that.
Yeah, I'm very new at this.
Do you have any other plans for ways you're wanting to be able to raise the money?
Yeah, and actually, like I said, we're going through other avenues, going through the rec board and the school district board. And then what else were we, we had something else here that we were looking at too. And besides the, we haven't really put anything into like actually doing some fundraising activities. We're kind of just looking for grants at the moment. Like I said, we're all pretty new to this. I haven't, I've never done anything like this. And we just wanted to do this the right way and actually try to get these fields done and fixed up. And I think it would be a huge help to the community and all the people that use that complex because it is a lot of people.
Good deal. Any other questions? All right, well, thank you.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
All right. Riverton Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Center.
Good evening, Council and Mr. Mayor. It's been a while since you guys have gotten to see my face, so I hope you enjoyed your vacation. So I am here to give you guys some amazing updates with our ask this year. We were able to secure one of the biggest goals since I was here with you guys last year. We were in a state of flux and we didn't really know the future of the chamber. At the, on July 1st, we were able to bring the Riverton ambassadors onto the chamber. And so we really started moving in a new direction of being a community force. And as of last month, we became, we have a home in the Wind River Heritage Center. And we're really excited to be able to develop that to really become a true visitors center and a place for people to stop. The south side of Riverton is probably one of the harder entrances into Riverton. And this really gives us a focus point to start beautifying that end of town and bringing more attention to that area. A lot of times, people ask themselves what the importance of the chamber is. And with having the visitors center, it is already amazing how much more traffic we've driven into the museum and being able to get people through there and having somewhere for us to send people who are new to our community and tourists and people who've been here. A lot of the calls we get fielded through the chamber come from, where do I pay my city bill? Where, who do I get ahold of for my electricity? Just general questions. So we're a huge education hub, networking group between business, tourists, and locals. Lobbying, press releases, and now we're going to have a free meeting space that can accommodate food and different kinds of events. This year, our biggest goal with the money that we're asking for from the city is starting to work on a lot of the infrastructure things that the city can't provide because it's, you guys are already tapped out. But really working on getting some of the branding that we've already worked on with the city. With like taking the website design and moving it towards the Why Riverton website so that it's all the same brand with Riverton's, the Riverton brand. So we're looking at creating maps and that haven't been updated in probably over 30 years. Along with, sorry, I got to that part. Signage, education, and economic development within the community. And then working on our community meeting space. And just really focusing on getting up and continuing on the direction that we're on and rebuilding the chamber. We have changed around our membership packages and that's been pretty well received. So instead of, people are, it's kind of a pay-to-play how far they want to go on to their memberships instead of it being an arbitrary number that businesses were being asked to pay. So we've done a lot of improvements and we hope to just keep on rolling.
All right. Any questions? Running away before you have to go to, you have to be kidding. I was saying you were running away before you had to answer any questions. You figured they would have asked them. All right. Another group that starts with Riverton, Riverton Little League.
Good evening. I'm Christina Olson. I'm the Secretary of Riverton Little League. This year, we are asking for $3,000 to help us pay with our utilities and field maintenance. And this includes paying workers to drag and chalk our fields and some new clay bricks for pitching mounds. We have about 260 kids registered to play this year. So I, I thought, you know, it usually serves the families of those kids. The baseball fields are filled in the summer with spectators and the kids. And so with that many players, that's about 130 games between May 1st and the end of June that fields have to be prepped for with the lines chalked. And that's a lot of work to ask volunteer board members. So we have, it's been successful in hiring like some middle school-aged kids. We do contract for services with them and we pay them to chalk our fields. Also, we are hosting districts this year, which is the biggest Little League tournament. So that will be in July and we have some pitching mounds that need rebuilt on the tee ball field and coach pitch field. And those clay bricks aren't cheap. So that's what I have. Any questions?
I don't think so. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, Riverton Senior Citizens Center, Inc.
Good evening, Your Honor and Board. My name is Lori Weber. I'm the Director of the Riverton Senior Citizen Center. And with me is Frank Tanner. He's the President of our Board. We are here to ask for $31,000 to assist in putting a new roof on the bus garage. The bus garage handles the, we park our vehicles. Riverton Senior Center operates Riverton Public Transit. And so about half of our, the people that we serve are senior citizens. And the other half are just members of the public who need rides in Riverton. I'm going to hand out a little packet that shows that we own the facility because there, we've presented for a couple other grants. And afterwards, we've received reports that we don't own the building. And I think people are getting it confused with the actual senior center itself. The senior center itself is owned by the city, as you know. But the Riverton Senior Center Bus Garage is, I believe, owned by us. So I'm going to hand that out. You can look through it. It has a copy of the deed that shows the city sold it to us and so forth. So I'll quickly do that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have a little presentation. I'll try to figure out how to do this. Okay. Which one is this? That one. So how do I get to that? Must be here. I think I...
Unlike my television at home, works half the time.
Okay. This is for the, it's going to show some pictures of the damage to the walls and exterior of the bus garage. So now how do I go to the next thing? Just enter? Okay. All right. This picture was taken from Google Maps in August of 2019. And as you can see down on this bottom part, clear back then, the north side of the exterior was showing signs of rust damage. Clear back from, from that time and it has continued to have more damage since. Now, on April 7th, there was icicles hanging from the roof, a lot of snow up on the roof. There was so much snow along here, you couldn't even see that damage to show you current pictures of, of the damage to the facility. But about 10:30 in the morning, the roof started melting and leaking on the 7th. And so you can see a little spot right through here that shows that it was starting to get wet on the concrete floor. This picture shows that there was quite a bit of moisture already accumulated below a vent up above on the ceiling. This picture shows some of the ceiling tiles up above one of the restrooms. And it shows that we've had several different problems with the ceiling having water issues. This one on the 7th, it just was starting to get wet along the bottom edge here. So somewhere between the walls was getting moisture and it was starting to seep into the building. And you can see places where there's some water stains on the inside. This could possibly have been problem because this is a toilet right here, but we don't think so. And it was an opening, so we were able to show you that you can see this is dry right here, but this is wet. Was in the walls of one of the toilets or the restrooms with the toilet next to it. This picture shows daylight coming through one of the gaps between the old part of the building and the new part of the building. So somewhere up on the top, either a seal is gone or, or it has corroded through. Anyway, I don't have the thing you're all wanting and that is a picture of the roof damage itself. As I showed you in that one picture, there was a lot of snow, icicles, and you will never, ever get me up there. I would have sent someone else up on the roof to take those pictures, but it wasn't safe. You are all welcome to come look at it if you want to. Or when it gets nicer, I could have someone go up there and take the pictures of the corrosion that's occurring up on the bus garage. I would encourage you to support us in this endeavor because we do service a lot of people. In 2019, before COVID hit, we gave over 17,000 rides that year. We aren't up to that level yet, but in 2022, we did provide over 11,000 rides to residents of the community. Frank, do you have anything you want to add?
Well, simply that this is an on-call service that's available to the general populace. Okay? On all our buses, it says, "Public transportation." Okay? I don't envy you having to decide where you're going to spend all this money. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Thank you, folks. Four left. Can you believe it? All right. Riverton Swim Club.
I just hope I don't hit anybody with the crutches. I hit a teacher last week. Jordan, I am here on behalf of the Riverton Swim Club, which we are affectionately known as the RipTide. We have been the RipTides since 2017. And you're going to laugh at me, but I left my application in the car and I didn't want to go back and get it. And I think we asked for five or four. Someone help me clarify.
5,000.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Six years ago, we had 35 swimmers to our name and now we have over 120. That is a huge jump. The money that was given to us last year was affectionately used to put on our own swim meet. We haven't had a swim meet in five years. And that was back when we were the Riverton Swim Club. We were so excited. We hosted seven teams in our community. And that was over 205 athletes, including our team. We had Cody, Powell, Morland, Casper, Douglas, and even Rollins came. We were really excited that they made it. Because it was the beginning of December and the beginning of all the snow. We ended up almost catching Lander. We were 150 points behind, which is a huge because normally we're like 600 points behind Lander. So that was a feather in our hat. Just really excited about that. We are a year-round swim club. We are here for 10 months out of the 12-month year. We are currently in our spring season. We had 120 athletes signed up for the winter season, which is a six-month season. The money that we are asking for is to host another meet in the coming season of winter and also possibly another meet. We had huge compliments on our facility at the Riverton Aquatic Center. People are, all of the teams loved it. They loved how we ran our meet. We unfortunately do not have enough USA officials to set the deck. And so we had to pay other officials to come and fill those spots. And those spots would be like the deck ref, the referee for overall, the AO who runs the computer system that's as old as a dinosaur. And then, of course, our stroke intern, all those people, all the white shirts you see running around doing all those jobs. We had eight people in those positions. We need 12. So we're working on training and that comes out of our own pocket and volunteer. None of them were paid from our own team. We had to pay everybody else to come. Also, the other thing we do with the money that you gave us and that we want to do more of, and we have had outreach from the community, other community business owners want to help us with, is scholarships. We were able to do 16 scholarships this year for low-income families. I'm proud to say that some of them were from foster homes and they started the season and finished the season. And some of them also fed into the middle school season and the high school season. So other kids who wouldn't have been able to swim were able to get excellent instruction and then go into the public arena and swim for our middle school and our high school, which is what we are here to do. We are here to help our community and we're here to help the littles learn to swim, help them get better, help them be safe in the water, help them love the water, and then to also get them swimming for our middle school and our high school and beyond. And then we also have our older swimmers who are turning around and helping our younger swimmers by mentoring and coaching. And then we also have our older swimmers who are turning around and helping our younger swimmers by mentoring and coaching. We have 10 coaches on staff, and we're hoping to have more because we are getting more and more swimmers every season. Do you guys have any questions for me? I'm on one leg here, folks.
We can let you go.
Thank you. And thank you for your time. You don't want me to hit somebody? I didn't bring my knee crouch for that reason.
All right. Riverton Volunteer Firemen.
Good evening. I guess mayor and council members. My name is Jake Blumentzheim, I'm the fire chief. I brought Jesse with me, he's the assistant fire chief, Jesse Cassidy. We asked for basically $5,000 to help fund, we've got around 37 members on the fire department that are active members. And it's just something just to kind of help take care of things after fire meals or after fires and after meetings. We have, last year to date, we had 200 calls, which is down a little bit. Thankfully, we're not complaining. This year, we're already at 70. Last year, we wasn't even close. We was probably like 20, maybe 30 by this time of the year. So fire calls have came up quite a bit. Of course, due to our winter that we had, we had a lot of calls, a lot of snow damage issues, a lot of CO alarms, a lot of gas meter issues. I mean, all sorts of different calls that you usually don't get, you know, until you get a three-foot of snow, I guess. So I just want to keep it short and sweet. That's pretty much, we just thought if we could get 5,000, this is going to help out the guys. We tried to do things like buy a nice sweater once in a while, something like that with, you know, just a little bit of extra cash. The fire district, I don't know if anybody knows how big it is, it's basically the size of the school district. So we cover a lot of ground, a lot of hours. 13,000 hours total on fire scene last year, if all accounted. I mean, basically, the average call is usually about an hour from being on scene to being back to the station. We meet, oh, usually we try to say once a week, but it seems like we're doing that quite a bit. Jesse and I have been at, we pretty much have meetings all week this week, so, every night, so we're pretty busy. But we usually, like every Wednesday or every Thursday night, we have training or a maintenance. It is kind of flip-flop, so like one week we'll do maintenance, next week we'll do training. End of the month, last Wednesday of the month is our monthly meeting. That's when this kind of stuff kind of helps out with. We usually try to cook a meal for the men and have a meeting and then have a good dinner afterwards, and then everybody gets to go home. So if we could get you guys' support, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
All right.
Thanks.
Chief and assistant chief. All right. Volunteers of America. Can you tap that mic? Hello, is it working? It's just got a little bit of a buzz.
My hearing aid.
Mayor Hancock, council members, my name is Brad Hinger, I'm the new program director over at the Center of Hope.
My name is Heidi McNeil. I am the senior director over the Center of Hope and Harmony House for the Volunteers of America. And also with us today is our VP of Residential Services, Susie Arnold. Sitting down, letting us take the limelight of everything. Today, I have passed out a packet to everybody. And while I have a presentation that I can give, I think we're on the final countdown here. So I won't go through it verbatim and everything like that. But I did want to let you guys know that there are a lot of changes with the Center of Hope and just go over a little bit of what it is that we do and what we are. So the Center of Hope here is a residential facility that provides a transitional service and social detox here in town. And we provide, and that is the level of care that we provide. We provide 24-hour monitoring. We provide observation and supportive services. And that's provided by our trained staff and the clients. And this is a pre-treatment process. And I think that it's something that, previous to a lot of things that have happened, I think, here, where Center of Hope was before Brad and I came on as a team, because we are new to the facility. The center was more of a, I think, what people have told me, it was a drunk tank or something like that. But now it is something where we observe people, we monitor them, we help them stabilize, and then we help them into a pre-treatment, so that we help them get into that next stage of recovery. And part of that is our transitional level of care. And that transitional level of care is something that helps them transfer into being a member of our community in a recovery state and being somebody who is an active and supportive member of our community. Some of the services that we are providing is, in our application that we provided to you, I did include what are each one of our clients has provided. They are provided a, part of what our application is that we provide. We provide each one of them our expectations, something that is a little bit different than what it was in our predecessors. It is an expectation that it says, here's what we are to provide you, here's what our expectations are that we want. And here are the services that we are providing to you. So we provide them a program of daily services. We provide them with things like fitness and case management. We provide them with peer level of support. We provide them with licensed therapist care. We provide them with medical management and telehealth and that. We recently, as an organization, merged with facilities both in the southern hemisphere and the northern hemisphere, providing outpatient services. So we provide a full continuum of care that does provide medical case management as well as psychiatry. And that is part of the Center of Hope's level of care now. We also provide a spiritual support, and that is both Christian and the Native American support. And anything that comes from there is a spiritual property. So within all of these things that I'm talking to you about, I guess the biggest thing in our ask or what I want to tell you about is what has changed. As Brad has mentioned, he is a new program director, and I am a new senior director over the facility. So our leadership has changed, our programming has changed. And as I just mentioned, our merger with two different facilities has made our whole continuum of care. It's something that has also changed. We also are asking the clients to have a higher level of accountability, which includes their classes to have the know so that we are able to provide our community partners, such as their probation and parole, and anybody who, their legalities, or anybody that we are partnering with to know, here's where they are, here's what they are doing, and have an expectation of things like that they are working, that they are volunteering within the community, that they are helping out to be part of support group meetings and have sponsorship. We are also having a huge influx because of this greater level of accountability, because of these greater level of programming, that we are now having a greater level of referrals. And because of that, we are now having a waitlist. We're having a waitlist both in our social detox level of care and in our transitional level of care. And because of that, that's where we're coming to you for our ask. Because we are limited now in the number of beds and the number of services that we can provide. Because we can provide right now, as in our application, it states that we provide care to ten transitional beds and four social detox beds. And what we are asking to do is to provide beds for two additional social detox or pre-treatment beds so that we are able to help, two additional beds of service so that we can get them into that next level of recovery.
These would be social, you said two additional social detox beds?
Our social detox are a pre-treatment bed. So as they enter in, we help them stabilize in their detox, their stabilized, so that they can apply into treatment. So that they can get into that transitional level of care that we offer in the Center of Hope or into another recovery facility. And just some figures, in the past year, we've actually served here in the Center of Hope 159 clients, which is 2,252 days of detox services, 6,342 days of the residential services. And we've actually welcomed in 72 first-time admits. What this means is that 82% of all of our previously incarcerated individuals have successfully completed our program and re-entered into our community. And the state standard is actually at 66%. 77% of all of our program participants have successfully completed our program and re-entered our community. And our national average is actually, or the national average is only 43%. Kind of questions you guys have for me?
How we can make the buzzing stop? I don't, I don't know if you have any questions, I might have had one. Give me just a second, I was looking through. So you also, Heidi, you do Harmony House, is that the one over in Sheridan, is that correct?
Actually, I do the one that's in Cheyenne.
Cheyenne, okay. Sheridan's Alight?
Because our pre-treatment service is actually a partner with the Light House and Harmony House. So that if anybody is concerned in our, we're able to partner with those residential services and able to let them.
But right now, you can provide 3.1, which is the low.
Which means we get five hours of community therapeutic intervention, which is one hour of individual therapy plus five hours, or four hours of therapeutic group. So whether that's a peer specialist or whether that is a therapeutic group, they have to, each client is required to get five hours of therapy.
All right, those were the things I was wondering about, any? All right, well, thank you very much. All right. Mr. Tower, Wind River Heritage Center, is that you?
That's me. We decided to split it up because we're kind of the same organization now, but.
I get it.
Separate 501(c)(6) and 3s. So the, it was, moving in was kind of cool. I've always, ever since I was a little kid and saw Indiana Jones, I always thought it was cool to take things off of the ground and say, you know, this blog's a museum. And so now I have one that I can go and look at stuff in, and it's super cool. There is hidden treasures there that a lot of people don't know that we have in that private collection from the Coral family and others that have allowed us to have those things. The greatest thing about that, being in conjunction and taking over the Wind River Heritage Center as the Chamber of Commerce, is it, like Bethany said, it does allow us to have that actual physical footprint as a visitor's center. And just since we've been starting that move in, I've scheduled two or three different tour groups that are coming in just to see the Heritage Center. Of course, they're coming through Wyoming, doing other things and everything like that. But these are busloads of 45-plus people that are like, hey, you know, we want to come and spend a few hours there around lunchtime. So we all know that as we get people into that, into the city, and they need to eat after, because we, I mean, I guess we could eat some of the animals there, probably not ideal, but emergency situations, maybe. But the, you know, it's actively bringing people into the city. The 10,000 that we're asking for, I included the budget and for the projected budget for next year and where that would be split up to into the remodel and repair, marketing and advertising and events type of things. So we've had a lot of people ask us what we're going to do with that property. We've got a lot of ideas, and we've got a lot of partnerships that we're working on developing. I have a uranium short-track train car from one of the uranium mines. It is in the back of that lot that nobody can get to. So, and that museum, other than that, doesn't really have a uranium exhibit, but the city Riverton Museum, it's part of the county museum system, does. And so we'll, you know, we'll be talking with them, trying to coordinate these things, you know, and really work together with all the stakeholders in the historical area. I also had an idea earlier today, we could build like a lazy river like they have in amusement parks, but throw railroad ties in it, and throw kids on top of the railroad ties, and they can float it down. So it's not the river, it's a little safer.
That was the way we would, you know, transport railroad ties.
Exactly, yeah, so we can actually have a live tie hack. Yeah, yeah, we should, we should talk to that guy. But, yeah, so we are asking for 10,000. One amendment that I did want to make to the application was, is I was doing this one while I was on the road traveling, and I was having some formatting issues, it didn't, for some reason, I thought I had put it down, but on the list of donation sources and amounts for the prior two years, it was missing. That number is $7,286.10 for '22 and '21. So if you look at the total budget without the, what we're asking for on the city contract services, just in donations, that's about half of the operating budget. The employees that the Heritage Center has there, the two full-time employees, are not paid out of either budget. They are senior workforce program individuals that the state pays. And so we're really lucky in that position, too. And speaking with the workforce training, they want to continue that relationship as long as we can. I'm also, have been speaking with the university as far as internships go, and that appears to be promising as well. So we want to really expand that meeting space we have and modernize it as well as front office area delineation between the visitors' center and chamber and the actual museum, so people don't get confused. So, yeah. Anyway, any questions?
All right.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Well, I don't know about you guys, but that was fun. I enjoy hearing about things going on.
There's a lot going on.
There is a lot. I really appreciate all the hard work. I really appreciate all the hard work that everybody does. So I'm sure you know you're not going to get answers tonight. This was just basically to hear from everybody, so we'll have another meeting where we're going to sit down and talk about it and try to figure out exactly how we're going to come as close as we can to funding $603,000 with, what do we have, total? 200 and...
Last year, we funded 270,000.
270,000, so I don't know, I'm not, I'm not very good at math, but those don't equal the same, so we'll have to figure out how it all goes, but...
We're not quite halfway there.
Yeah, yeah. But anyway, thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. Do we have anything else, Mr. Butterfield?
Yes, Your Honor, if it's okay, this is on a different matter. While we have the council together, I just wanted to inform you that there's opportunity to sign an agreement to continue to pursue the opioid national settlement. As a reminder, the city council participated, that is part of the One Wyoming Opioid Settlement subdivision agreement, memorandum of agreement. That covered four of the national opioid settlements that were on the table at that time. There have since been five new settlement cases on the national scale, and we have opportunity to continue, I guess, that settlement opportunity through the One Wyoming agreement we've already executed. I just wanted to let you know that we'll be executing further agreements to participate in five more settlements.
And then we also had one that we did ourselves, not necessarily with the rest of the state, is that correct? I'm trying to remember, we had an attorney that, we had any results on that yet? No?
Your Honor, I do not believe that we have. I think that's all part of the One Wyoming settlement.
Subsumed into that, huh?
Correct.
All right. All right, good. Anything else? For the good of the order? No. All right. Well, good. I'm not trying to make this take longer, I just don't want to have a motion to adjourn and then come back or something and re-convene. All right, well, I would entertain a motion to adjourn, then.
So moved?
Second.
Councilman Larson with the motion, second with Councilwoman Cox. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Motion passes. We are adjourned at 8:44 PM.